David, it's Elliot. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Just hit start video. All right. Can you still hear me?
And we can see you.
That is your risk, but I'm doing this on my iPhone because somehow we couldn't get the my laptop to accept the code. Anyway, I'm here. I will only speak when spoken to because I don't know how many others are being subjected to this right now. So if you want me to chime in or anyway, I will now keep my microphone on so I can speak, but I will otherwise be quiet. Ladies and gentlemen, very sorry, but we're having technical difficulties bringing the Chair of the Community Board into the meeting. So please stand by and bear with us. Thank you.
Yeah, do we start?
Oh, you didn't get to hear Jerry. We're having trouble getting the chair in.
I don't hear anything. Is there a number? I don't hear anything.
You didn't hear when Jerry came on and he told everyone that I'm having trouble getting the chair in.
I'm not even hearing. I didn't see him come in. I see myself. I see some of the people, but I don't see I don't see anybody.
Yeah, okay.
Rabbi, we can see and hear you.
I can see you too.
Okay, so we can hear you as well. Just want you to be mindful that you're not on mute.
You better not tell people all those secrets that you've been carrying around.
Hi, Tom. Are you here?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Hi, nice to see you.
Good evening. Well, you look as cute as ever.
Can I have my committee meet on the side to discuss the 80 billion liquor licenses?
Perfect.
Can we go out in the hallway?
Can we see your books up there?
Everybody read all those liquor licenses.
Okay, so then, can you hear me, Tom?
There's 112 licenses on that list.
I moved them with them all.
I can hear you, Maria. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm on. Can you hear me?
Yes, Marie, we can hear you.
Oh, Tom, how you doing, love?
Today's one, day 180 says work at home, stay at home.
Oh, alrighty.
A computer screen's facing at me from many, many different directions. How are you, Marie?
I'm good. I'm good, thank you. I've been working at home too.
Have you been thrilled with the one block closure of Graham Avenue for no purpose whatsoever other than to screw us up on Manhattan Avenue?
I'm disgusted with everything. Even the tables out in the street. We have no parking at all now.
Well, I don't know. The street closing serves no purpose. The restaurants have their little corrals. It's like, why does the whole street have to be closed?
So people can walk on the street, social distance.
Great. They all stand around the bar.
And also, if you go to other community boards, you know that that does not exist. I've not seen any place around buildings in New York.
One block of Graham Avenue between Consigliere and Skilman ties up the entire Graham Avenue.
So here in Greenpoint, Tom, imagine they even closed West Street, which has one bar on West Street. And at least West Street was used for to slim the traffic on Franklin, right? So now, why do we close West Street? It's completely deserted.
Because the grass at the buildings on the waterfront got killed by the dogs.
I did a, Tom.
Yeah.
I did a press conference today with somebody I think you know.
How did it?
The woman who, she's a transgendered woman that worked on Ray Kelly's commission to incorporate LGBTQ protocols into the patrol guide. You know what I'm talking about?
I've been on five different police commissioners' commissions.
Her name is Mary.
Nope.
I've tried to talk to her, but there's so much going on. It's like on the same thing that you do at One P A. Like where you're like the commissioner's liaison or something.
Well, I quit. I gave up on the police department, so I don't go to that anymore. Too many white people, so I said, I can't go anymore. I need a little diversity, I said, so I'll volunteer to leave. But I don't know any Mary.
She spoke a lot about Ray Kelly, so she might have left.
Yeah, but I was on his, I was on his, Bratton's, all of them.
Lovely lady.
Don't know. You saw the great publicity on the renaming of Martha P. Johnson Park.
Yep.
What are they trying to do with the Alice? Right, of course, through a window? What's going on?
Can you tell me why she can't use a telephone?
Where is she? Are they trying to, where is the Alice? How come they can't get her in? Put her on Marie's phone. Put her on Community Board.
How did I get to the telephone?
The Brady Bunch is waiting for her.
Into the access area has now resulted in our application, which has taken well over a year. So with that, I think I would allow David to run through some of the technical requirements. And then we're available and Elliot's available to answer any specific question. So David, if you want to continue.
Thank you, Richard. Just running through some of the technical aspects. On page slide four, you can see the site and the area that it is. Site five shows the certification. That's a piece of this action to show that the site plan complies with the visual corridor requirements. And you can see how South East visual corridor extends through. This is just recertifying based on the new site plan with a previous certification having been done in 2015. Moving to slide six, you can see, this is a map of the different public areas in the waterfront public access area. With all of these areas, what you find is that you're either going to be in Shore Public Walkway. What's in blue hatches called supplemental public access area, which is the additional public access or in the upland connection. And then DEC required us to shift things around for either to cap the bulkhead in the area at the top of the page that you see in gray or to re-carve out protections for the wetlands, which is the part just to the right where you see it kind of cuts in. Everything moved around. And so the blue areas that you see at the top, the 872, the 319, and the 86, those were previously part of the Shore Public Walkway, but now for technical reasons are now supplemental public access areas. And then all the blue areas that you see running up and down on the sides, those are areas that were previously designated as private property. And now through these actions would be designated as permanently public access. So they would have to stay in the condition that they're in now and wouldn't be able to be cordoned off for any kind of private use or change to the design. And so
Can you move the slides? Please, can you move the slides? You're still at slide three. I'm sorry.
The way that WebEx, and I know there were a lot of complaints about this before, I can't share the screen and move the slides, but everyone can move the slides along with me either using the arrow buttons on their keyboards. And each of the slides has a number on it. It's one of the unfortunate things of WebEx. And so with these new, these blue areas hatch have to stay open to the public and in the condition that they're in for the site plan. Slide seven, what you're going to see in some of these slides is just side-by-side comparison of the plans that were originally approved versus the as-built condition that we're looking to show here. There are some slight differences in the way the plans were drawn that make them look a little bit different, particularly with the cheating and the legend. But these plans are showing the same areas to scale. And you can see here the way that the cove was modified, the protections around it. And so the 40-foot requirement, the blue line that you see on the left was the 40-foot line, which complied with the zoning. And then when it was changed, now in one point, the shortest distance between the edge of the building and the waterfront is 38 feet and 10 inches, which is 14 inches short. And that requires an authorization of both the minimum width of the Shore Public Walkway and the required waterfront yard, which end up being the same thing here. Moving on to slide eight. You can see the transition area. It's another waiver that we need. The requirement for planting for this is 40% of the planting, which amounts to required 768 square feet of planting. In 2016, the Fire Department had asked for particular modifications to make sure that they had vehicular access, which brought the number of planting down on what you see on the left, which amounts to 643 square feet of planting. As proposed on the right, it does not amount to the full 768, but the planting is proposed is increased to 671 square feet of planted area. And you can see that it's buffered around it by new additional permanently public space, including areas that are permanently planted. Moving on to slide nine, you can see the upland connection. If you look at the red line going along the top, you can see how the change in the cove changed the shape of the Shore Public Walkway and ended up moving a lot and reduced the size by a couple of hundred square feet. Also, between that move and the proposed changes to the lawn area and replacing it with gravel, the total planting in this upland connection type one was reduced from 2,500 square feet roughly to 2,138 square feet, which is just shy of the required 2,334 square feet, or a difference of about 3.3%. On slide 10, you can see the proposed comparison of the lawn area. On the left in the 2016 approval, you see the area that is just flat grass. And on the right, you can see the proposal to add additional outdoor seating and changing the surface of that area for permeable paved gravel. And just for those who aren't familiar, you can see on slide 11 pictures of what this lawn has started to look like. During the Land Use Committee meeting, there was a lot of discussion about making sure that we've done everything we can to protect this grass, and we have. We've spoken with the landscape architects and the maintenance team. Every measure that we could was deployed, but the options become limited because what they pointed out to me that I didn't have in front of me at the Land Use Committee meeting was that this area of the grass also falls within an easement held by the city and the state as well as part of the necessary vehicular access path for the Fire Department. So whatever goes in this strip needs to be drivable. And so any kind of structures that you put to coordinate off or program the space that would interfere with the ability of any kind of vehicle to go over it would just not be acceptable. And so Parks had asked us to look at replacing this with synthetic turf. The Department of City Planning had some other concerns about what might happen with synthetic turf and how dirty and hot and smelly that can get when it meets sunlight and dogs. And so everyone started talking about this and we arrived that the paved gravel would be the best solution here. Moving on to slide 12, there's a requirement for a screen buffer. In 2016, you can see the original approval, there was a plan here to have two different commercial entrances into the building. When we were here in front of this board in 2018 with the phasing authorization, there was a lot of discussion about allowing some kind of that retail inside the building might not make a lot of sense here and that people wanted to see outdoor dining here that put more eyes on it, use the space a little better. And so what that resulted in was removing one of the commercial entrances. And for that, the zoning requires a densely planted screen buffer between the building and the public areas, which would be required on the right, right about where you see the 10-foot 8. And we felt then, and we feel especially now with COVID, that having that kind of outdoor use that is meshed with the Shore Public Walkway actually enhances the experience and livens up the area a little bit and prevents this corner of the Shore Public Walkway from becoming a kind of back alley that no one ever gets to because it's dark and wooded on all sides. And then there's all the waivers. The rest of the slides show different pictures of the area. I'd point to slide 15, which shows a rendering from Seawolf of the effect that this particular, that that not having the screening buffer has on kind of opening this area up to the public a little bit more. And I would also point to on slide 21, I think is the best one that shows this. You can see the corner of the building right there, measured to the corner of the fence on the other side. That's the 38 feet, 10 inches that requires the waiver of the minimum width of the Shore Public Walkway. And this is the only point where it's less than the required 40 feet. And so I think with that, we're happy to take any questions from members of the board or the public.
We asked people to put questions in the chat if they had. Joanna, is there any questions in the chat pertaining to this presentation?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Yes. There's a question from Katie Naplatarski and William Elkins.
Can you read the questions?
From Katie Naplatarski, I went to this part of this property today and so that there is really, there is a really nice residential low area with fencing around it and a sign saying, please allow grass to regrow. And it looks great. I think it's a mistake to give up on the grass. That precedent needs to be grass or planting of some sort. No gravel. William Elkins, why was the synthetic turf not pursued? Simply because of dog owners?
And thank you for the questions. I think that and this speaks to really the developers and their approach to projects like this. As difficult as it is and as we found it to maintain the grass and why we're here going through this process to be able to repave the area pursuant to the previous authorization and the certification of these plans, we remain required to maintain these plantings. And so despite the fact that it keeps getting run over, we still have to do this again. And it's just impossible to maintain long term. Every avenue to do this, and I know that Elliot Spitzer here can talk more about the efforts that they've put in to doing this, and the dog traffic makes that impossible.
David, this is Elliot and I, everybody, I appreciate your time and attention to this. And let me just begin by saying that we're proud of what we've built. Hope you appreciate it and find it aesthetically satisfying, a good contribution both to Williamsburg and to all of Brooklyn. And we are especially happy about the 187 affordable units, all of which are filled. And I think anybody who has gone through this knows that it is difficult to do that, but we have gotten all 187 leased and that's something, including over 30 homeless families. So we're very proud of that. In terms of the specific grass, I can promise you that both as a matter of protecting natural environments, as a dog owner, I would have preferred that the grass there be possible. It simply wasn't. You have a very small space that is actually covered with grass. and the number of dogs in that neighborhood, many of them who reside in the building, simply overran that space no matter what we did. We had signs, we encouraged, we persuaded, we cajoled, we begged, we pleaded, we watered the grass. And as a consequence, I think we, as David and Richard have said, have gone through a very complete process with both Parks and the other city agencies in effort to find the best answer. And I wish grass or some synthetic, the city rejected synthetic, said it simply wouldn't work for the reasons David alluded to. And I wish we could come up with something that would work, but the city was quite adamant that the combination that David described, the synthetic gravel and the other stuff, is what they expect us to put in there. Can I? Well, I see a couple of questions up on the chat. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to react to them or respond to them. We're, in terms of this area, yes, there's going to be a little berm there, which is, I guess, the architectural term for a bump. That area will continue to be planted in some way, shape, or form. Am I right, David? But I think the seats will be there. It's the flat area that will be the gravel.
Yeah, I think that if we go back to, I'm just going to pull up the slide number. So on Slide 10, you can see on the right and left, you can see on the left is the previous approval that where on the left you have that rounded area where you see the trees. That's where the berm is, the little bit of hill heavily planted. And on the right, there are the covered seating that you see now and that are in the pictures. Those areas will stay exactly the same. The only proposed change is the change that you can see in the difference between the two drawings, which is that on the left, there's the area in green that is just grass and then the area on the right, which is a darker shade of some color that I can't quite tell from this distance without my glasses on, that will become paved gravel instead of the glass.
The other point I'd make, David, is that, and I hope everybody in the community board has been down to the esplanade, which I really think is, again, I'm obviously partial, but I think it's quite a wonderful contribution to the waterfront. There is loads of planting along the entire esplanade. And as I say, we all believe we need more trees and more grass in the city. It simply didn't work in this one location. But elsewhere along the esplanade, I think the plantings are beautiful and the trees are thriving. And I can tell you, we're putting a lot of effort and funding into maintaining them and making sure that's the case.
Are we still asking questions? Because I have questions in the chat.
I think that, so with respect to the other questions that I'm seeing in the chat, I think they're all along the lines of what we've been talking about with the grass. The questions about the affordable, about Domino, I can't speak to the site conditions at Domino, I just don't know them. But I know here we're dealing with a very unique set of factors, particularly in making sure that this area remains navigable because it is within city owned easement. And then the other issues I think are here about the affordability, about the affordable housing, but I don't know if there's, if people asking those questions can specify what their question is or if it's just a general statement about the need for...
David, I don't have in front of me, and I apologize. I'm just assuming if the question was, what is the breakdown across the various income levels? I do not have that right in front of me. But I'll tell you, it spans the entire spectrum as most inclusionary housing does. But at the request of the city, and I don't think this was mandated initially, we have over 30 apartments that are filled with homeless individuals and families. And so I think that has made, obviously been an important effort on the part of the city to confront what is an issue that we all have to care about.
How long are they going to have access to staying in that apartment?
The inclusionary units?
Yeah.
In perpetuity. Well, I guess that's a long time for people. The units will always be inclusionary units. I wish them perpetuity, but that's, I'm not sure any of us gets that.
Well, you said it on the record, right?
Okay, yes.
So I just see that Katie had asked specifically different kinds of plantings in this area. Again, compared to the berm, which has next to it on the hill, which has ornamental grass, the fact that this needs to remain a flat surface that can be driven on changes a bit of the topography and what we can plant. Some of the ornamental grass, when you lose some actual passive space that people can use. And clearly, the central location of this is such that you want people to be able to walk through it. That's the idea of grass was for people to be able to use it. And it's regrettable that it got overrun by dogs the way it did. Any of that kind of ornamental grass, aside from the fact that it may or may not actually be able to grow there the depth, would be impossible, would not be navigable by either by people or by vehicles. It would just take that space away from the public. Tom, I noticed that you've mentioned that it was an intentional taking of grass. I just hope that you're not imparting that on the developer, because I think we've been clear. This is not something we wanted.
And it's Richard Lobell. Just to kind of reiterate some of what was stated. You know, I think that Elliot's really tried to go a long way to make this a really functional and enjoyable esplanade for the community. You know, we are at about 6,000 square feet greater than what was originally required, and that was by design. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we had to go through this additional process, you know, for these changes, which were really, in large part, required because of compliance with state regulation. But, you know, I'm encouraged by the fact that some, in the chat, I see that people who live nearby enjoy it. They feel that it's a really pleasant area. And, you know, we're hopeful that the community board can allow us to move forward.
I could not see the entirety of the question that was in the chat. But let me just reiterate what Richard said. We went through a dynamic process with a whole slew of city agencies about what this covering should be. And we, as you, tried very hard to keep it grass or some equivalent, including astroturf and everything else. City Parks and DCP, City Planning, are the ones who gave us this as sort of, not quite take it or leave it, but essentially they said, this is what you're doing.
And Steve, just to address your point. If I think I'm getting your question right, the area of the gravel amounts to 986 square feet. The surplus of open space here is over 6,500 square feet.
Who's moderating right now? Like, what's, there's a lot of space and time. What's happening?
Chair, are you able to speak? Jerry?
Can we keep going? Can somebody chair and facilitate is what Diane's asking.
So is the vice chair in the meeting?
Yes.
Is the vice chair in the meeting?
I don't think so.
Jerry?
Simon's not here. The next one in line is Ms. Teague.
I do not have an agenda, so...
We're just asking for a chair right now.
How about the chair of the committee make a motion and everybody vote and move this on?
So let me just, then, why don't I just say that we did have a public hearing and a land use committee meeting? And the presenters have made my job very easy right now because...
Just a point of order. Don't we have to close the hearing before we move into the meeting?
She's chairing, she's chairing right now, Steve. She's chairing. We need to close the hearing.
Well, Steve, I don't know that I can close the hearing. On the other hand, I don't want to just...
We shouldn't be voting yet, all right? We have other items on the agenda. So if there are no further questions, then we'll move on.
Fine.
All right, hearing no further questions. And Dell, the next item on the agenda is a presentation update on the Census 2020 by Barb Williams, Field Associate. Is Barbara Williams in the house?
Yes, she is.
Okay, so let's proceed then. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
She needs to be unmuted. She's...
She's an attendee, so she has to be turned on.
Jerry, can you unmute her, turn her on?
I have to, I have to run up front and do that. I'll tell Marie to do that.
Thank you. Thanks.
I know, I'm trying to get her, I'm trying to get her to turn on.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, thank you. Can anyone, a second, I'm going to... Turn my screen, okay?
Yes, so we see you. All right, Ms. Williams, would you proceed, please?
I'm trying to see my screen right now.
Okay, we can see you.
Yeah, but my screen is for my slides.
I see.
It's not letting me. That's okay. I'll just, can you see that? Can you see that?
I only, I don't see it. I just...
Marie, the host has to turn on the share files button for you. So Jerry needs to walk back up front and tell her.
I have already done that.
All right, Marie. You know what? It's okay. I'll just do it without the slides, if that's okay. Is that fine? Nope.
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. So I want to say thank you first of all, because as a proud resident of Community Board One, it's an honor that I'm able to speak for the board. And I'm here to basically update you because we have about 22 days left to the census, to the end of the census. And I know you've had several speakers so far discuss the census. So I'm not going to waste your time in telling you why it's important that we do the census. As we all know, it's about census and rights and representation and redistricting. But if you can imagine this, all the hard work that you put into making sure our streets are clean and we have garbage cans on the corner and that, and make sure our kids have opportunities for education. We want to make sure that justice lines run properly. We want to make sure that we have enough subway lines in our community. But I imagine that we have 20 days left. Originally, we supposed to go to October 31st. Executive order from the White House was sent down to us, and now we're being forced to end the census, as I said before, on September 30th. So it's not just about the representation that makes it so important. It's about making sure we have our congressional seats where possible. Okay, so every 10 years, the data is used to determine how many seats we need in each state to get our congressional seats, right? And so this being said, because we only have but so many people filling out the census, we are going to lose probably two congressional seats. At the rate we're going, half of Brooklyn is going to be seen as invisible. So half of Brooklyn will not be counted at all. Okay, so the resources that's needed, the representation that's needed, we're not going to get it. And what we get will have to last for 10 years. I had a graph there where I wanted to show you how we did in 2010. 10 Brooklyn was at 55.6%, very low, when we finished the census. But as of now, when you look at Brooklyn, Brooklyn is at 55.3%. So we're not even where we were in 2010, okay? And in the neighborhoods such as Greenpoint, Greenpoint was at 54, 55, and now it's at 54, no, 54 and now it's at 53. And in Williamsburg, we're still below where we need to be. Self-response, but we're at 55%. So we still have a long way to go. We're only 22 days to go. So I'm coming to the board to tell you what Community Board One can do to help the situation. Okay, the first thing, I need to make sure that everyone who is on the call and their family members and their friends have done the census, okay? If they did it later in the summer, they have to make sure that they do it again. Because what happened with the post office being, you know, slowed down, a lot of mail was not received. So that means if anyone mailed in census later, it can't be counted. The good thing about this now, we have so many languages that we can help out with. You know, it's not just English and Spanish. We have Tagalog, we have Portuguese. And so we are very open to helping more people. Unfortunately, we don't have the time. So what we're asking you to do is to join us in some of our events that we have. So, what we're asking you to do is to join us in some of our events that we have coming up. We have outdoor events coming up, where we're hitting the streets, we're hitting the parks, we're going to vendors, we're going into the stores, we're hanging flyers and posters. And we're also doing phone banking, um, we're doing the subway stations as well. And so, in order to get involved with any of those activities, I would love for you to contact me personally. Um, Ms. De Alice, she has my phone number and my email. I'll say it at the end.
Barbara, can you also put it in the chat so that we could contact you separate from her?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, thank you.
Yes, so, what we have coming up, um, because we do... Because we do phone banks for Brooklyn, every Tuesday and every Thursday. On Tuesday, we do phone banking from 1:00 to 3:00, and on Thursdays, it's from 6:00 to 8:00. And the 24th will be our last opportunity to do any phone banking for the census, okay? So, we're having what we call Last Dance Phone Bank Party on September 24th. On, um, we're having a mutual aid in organizational challenge. So, if you're a part of a community board and you want to see how many people you can recruit to be part of the phone banking, or if you're part of an organization that is in Brooklyn, um, you can join us on September 10th. And I'll put the information for where you go to sign up for the calls, I'll put my email address, and I will put my phone number as well in the chat box.
Thank you, thank you.
But most of all, we just need help in getting this done, because like I said, we are way behind all the other boroughs. Um, right now, we're in last place, and...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, I have a question too.
I have a question.
Okay, one, one at a time, Dana?
So, Barbara, two questions. One, I know you can only phone bank up until the 24th, but people could fill it out online until the 30th, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then, secondly, I hear what you're saying about the challenge. You know, a lot of people are doing, um, Occupy the Block setups right now, and outside from, you know, 8:00 PM till 2:00 AM in the morning. Are you guys taking an innovative approach? Because those are the people most likely not running into you guys, most likely not signing up for the, not doing the census on their own. Are you going to be doing activations on impacted blocks overnight, um, both in our district and outside of our district, where people are most likely not engaged with the census?
Uh, it, it's funny that you say that, because, um, I came across, um, a rally recently. And when, um, when I went, they asked if anyone black or brown wanted to speak. And so, I spoke about the census and the need, um, for the census to be done, and, and I asked them to do the census on the spot. And so, when I walked away, someone came up to me who I knew, and he said, "Did you really..." A group of people who were not going to do the census, but when you just spoke to them, what you said to them? Um, to the fact where they wanted to know more about the census, and some of them actually did their census. And then I spoke at McCarran Park as well. So, I would go wherever is needed in order for us to get the numbers in.
And you have, and you have iPads that you could do it onsite with people?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have right in my apartment, I have. Um, and what we could always do is if the person doesn't want to do it on your iPad, you could ask them to pull up the website on their phone.
Okay, so I'm going to contact you separately, and I have some events we can come out to.
Okay, awesome, that'd be awesome. I really appreciate that, but, um...
Why are there so few hours a week?
Jan, please let her finish.
Okay, sorry, I can't...
No, that's fine, that's fine, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jan?
I, why are there so few hours a week that you're doing phone calling? Two hours and two hours seems, did I hear it right? Maybe I heard it wrong.
Well, that's because we're doing other things during the week as well. So, we, we're hitting the phone, um, pantry, the food pantries, and we're doing all kinds of events. We're doing a bicycling event, we're hitting the subways, we're hitting, um, the arena, the Barclays. We're, we're all over the place. And the sad part is, there's only five people who work for Brooklyn, um, like a steady work job for Brooklyn in the census. And, and we depend a lot on the volunteers. And so, I myself, I cover 11 different parts of Brooklyn. And we're talking about over 2 million people.
No, I'm shocked to hear this. I'm just saying is that we have a borough president running for mayor, and this is the state of this campaign. This really is unbelievable, I mean...
Yeah, but what I do with my volunteers that I meet with every week, um, I look at the numbers. And, um, and I give them the option to make calls on their own using a manual dollar instead of a predictive dollar. When we do it on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we use an automatic dollar that dials the number for you. But my volunteers and I, we've been focusing heavily on the Williamsburg section, not just because I live here, but because we see the numbers are really low. And out of all my 11 areas, all my, my neighborhoods are starting to come out of where they were in 2010. But my Williamsburg sections are the only two sections where my numbers are low.
Have you talked to the public housing leaders?
We're working with public housing, we have someone who does public housing, we have someone who does clergy, uh, we have someone who works for the Chinese community. Yes, so we, we cover faith, we cover, um...
Hasidic and Orthodox and all that.
Yes, we cover that, we cover the unions as well, we cover city workers. And so, we are still trying to figure out why it is that people don't want to do the census. Uh, a lot, a lot of people, when they speak about the census, they speak about it on a macro level. And when I speak to people, I try to find out why it's important to them. You know, people don't realize that when you leave your house, you walk down the street, everything you see smelling touch is impacted by the census, right? And so, with the COVID being so, so here, and we in need of, um, vaccines, what's going to happen when we have an undercount and they need to produce? They won't know how many to produce, and so, we're going to be short.
Wow.
Yeah, we've done, we do caravans, we've done that, we're playing, um, uh, march as well. Uh, you name it, we, we're doing all kinds of stuff. We've done virtual events during the COVID, every Tuesday.
Barbara, have you partnered with community-based organizations in the area that have a large constituency and a very intimate relationship with their constituents?
The community, there was an opportunity for community-based organizations to receive funding from the state. And there were probably about 250 organizations throughout this, the five boroughs that received funding. And we're not just talking about $5,000, some of them received quarter of a million dollars and maybe a little more. And this was to be used to design programs to educate. My focus is on those people who are coming out of prison. My people are, that I'm really looking out for is domestic violence situations, um, those people who are living in fear of the census, because, you know, like I said, you have to reach out to the person to where they are, not where you think they should be in life, right? And so, I've been focusing on the people who are hard to reach, uh, such as those people.
Well, I think we're now waiting to reach out to the people that are easy to reach too, with the numbers. But the question I would have is, you said some of the community-based organizations here have been funded to do this. Do you have that list? You have that list?
I have access to it, I don't have it on me.
Could you say that out to us also, so we know who's been funded to do this work? And, because it's, obviously, there's a real problem here. This is a crisis, this is not little, your stuff is very sweet, but it is big.
Yeah, it, it is a large problem, and this is for 10 years.
Yeah.
And, you know, we Corona now, we're going to have funding cuts. Continue to, to do this, you know, it breaks my heart that a lot of people don't see that this is a big...
Wow, yeah.
Problem, you know?
That's the list, right?
Yes, uh-huh, it was actually published in, in the newspaper, um, where they listed everyone who received a grant.
Well, let's find out how well they've done.
Yeah.
So, I want to say that one of the things that really hindered the process, needed the count to move forward, was COVID.
Um, I think that the, the funding was allocated somewhere in the third, in the first, in the beginning of the second quarter of this year.
And, and COVID started right when the funding was allocated. And that's the funding that Barbara were mentioning. And so, everything paused, and the, the counters, the, the, the outreach workers were not, the census outreach workers were not able to go out and knock on doors. And I know that you guys engaged heavily in some phone banking campaign and even texting, but I'm going to be very, very honest with you. I think that during those first four or five months of COVID, nobody was really focusing on census when everything was COVID. And now, there's a big rush, and the fact that the, the timing has been shortened to September is, is, it's, it's what's making it worse. So, I'm, I'm not going to say that the organizations are to blame for lack of production, because there's a lot, there's a lot. I mean, the census workers themselves, they could, you know, have expressed the challenges that were... So, this is why I'm saying have you partnered with these organizations, because it's, it's everyone's best interest to have people counted. And I know that there is an organization in Williamsburg that received funding. Um, so, there's, you know, it's probably an organization you should partner with.
Yeah, and, and, like you said, COVID was a big problem. And you know what? I say it's tricky, but, you know, during a, a COVID, we're lucky we got that far. We're lucky we got that far, because a lot of people, when I did call, a lot of people who we did reach to, they didn't want to talk about it. And but when I sat down and, and had a conversation with them on the phone about why it's important to their loved one who does have COVID, you know, and will need services when it's time to recover, they were like, "Oh, my goodness, I didn't realize it." I was so...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wait, 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 one at a time, please.
There are people on the chat that are giving a lot of suggestions of events that are being organized, events by elected officials that are being organized in Williamsburg and all of that stuff. I don't know Denise of Barbara, I'm sorry if you're able to see it, but it would be great if you would partner with them, I'm sorry Dana, I'll just...
We are, yeah.
I'm going to get off the soapbox in a second, but maybe those are good, you know, suggestions to partner with those folks. And Dana even had some ideas as well. So, there's a lot of connections here that you could probably benefit from.
Yeah, so, um, so we've been, I'm sorry, can I just say some, can I just say something? I'm sorry. So, we have partnered, because I want to, before I forget what she was talking about, um, I'm sorry. Because we are, we have partnered with Reno, so we have partnered with Myri, we have, um, partnered with a lot of the elected officials. Like, we have a separate department that deals with just the elected officials, and, and we have meetings with them. Participating is, is just, you know, is difficult when you're trying to get people to shift from the whole notion of trying to be safe and trying to be well to please take five minutes to do a census. Thing we are working with, we, we have worked with them, even up to Eric Adams in the May's office. We've worked with all the elected officials. Sorry, Dana?
No, I'm just, I just think that, like, we could have this conversation all night long. I'll tell you, as somebody who does a lot of organizing, it doesn't, you don't need an event. You need to go into laundromats where people are waiting for the laundry to be done, on the food bank lines, in the barber shops. All, meet people where they're at as they're sitting, waiting for things, that's where they're going to be. And people that have minimal access to the internet and whatnot. I think, you know, I'll send you some Occupy the Block information, so we can mobilize people outside. But again, it's really not centered around events, it's, you meet people where they're at. And we, we did 10,000 surveys in Brownsville in like three months on the ground, and it was 10 minutes each for each survey. And just, we're in barber shops, at laundromats, on the corner. The food bank line is around the corner at all the different food banks. People are sitting on that line doing nothing, so...
Yeah, we've, we've done that, we have, we have people who will go out in the streets and they're going into, like you said, we could, we stand outside, they check cash in place. We stand outside, when the lines are long, outside the food banks. Diana Richardson, she does something, so we join forces with her to do the food bank lines. So, we put, you know, so we're doing actual on-the-ground work. We have a squad of people who help me as well, so we are going to where the people are. But it's still...
Um, hi, it's Julia, I raised my hand twice, I'm sorry. Church has finally opened back up, and only a suggestion, somebody put it in the chat box. Maybe Sundays, I know it's short time, you only have three Sundays. They can hit the churches on Sunday, because people are coming back to church. Not two, not three, you've gotten maybe 40, 50 people. And I do know they haven't, a, a lot of them have not done their census, I have spoken to them. And, um, not only, like you said, the food bank, there's a food truck that comes to Cooper on Wednesdays, I believe, and the folks are lined up to get the food. Thursdays, they're in Williamsburg houses, in front of St. John's Church. So, if you can just, I gave you my phone number in the chat box, you can give me a call. There are some other events that I know about that's coming up this weekend, or, or my phone, it's in the chat box, you can give me a call.
Okay, not a problem, I will definitely give you a call. But, like I said, um, I'm going to put my information down in a box, and we need to see my, uh, phone banks sessions. And I appreciate you having me to speak tonight, and I thank you for your suggestions, for your time.
Thank you, obviously, it's a, it's a very, very important issue.
You press it.
Thank you. Jerry, I think we can move on to the next item.
Well, you have the, uh, the listing of liquor licenses that's attached to the agenda. And I guess we need a motion to open the board meeting.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we need a second?
I need, I second.
Okay. Okay, Jerry, so the...
So, it's a roll call for the, uh, full board meeting.
Okay.
Please answer when I call your name, unmute your microphone to do so, thank you. Gina Argento?
Here.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Present.
Lisa Biamonte? Gina Barros?
Here.
Tion Brooks? Tion Brooks? Eric Brusitis?
Here.
Tom Burrows?
Here.
Iris Cabrera? Phil Caponegro?
Yeah.
Frank Carbone? Stephen Chesler?
Here.
Michael Chiracella?
Here.
Teresa Censiata? Giovanni D'Amato?
Here.
Here.
Erin Drinkwater? Arthur Dubinowski, Erin Drinkwater?
Here.
Thank you. Arthur Dubinowski?
Here.
T. Willis Elkins?
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Present.
Chairperson Fuller? Chairperson Fuller? Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Sonia Iglesias? Moisha Indig? Ozina Kaminski?
Present.
Thank you, Avram Katz? Avram Katz? William Claggs-Bald? Ryan Coonan? Ryan Coonan? Don't have, uh, don't have visual.
Here. She was there before.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza? Marie Lianza? Abraham Liebovitz? Yolo? Yolo? Trina McKeva?
Here.
Sante Machi... Sante Machelli?
Here.
Sante Machelli?
He's, he's sitting here.
He's sitting here.
I'm sorry?
He's sitting here.
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, okay. I'm here now. Toby Moskowitz?
Here.
Thank you. Martin Needleman? Marty Needleman? Rabbi Needleman? Rabbi Needleman? Karen Nieves?
Here.
Thank you. Mary O'Dommerick?
Here.
Janice Peterson?
Here.
Dana Rackland?
Here.
Thank you. Isaac Soffer? Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano? Rob Solano? Stuart? Dell Teague?
Here.
Tommy Torres?
Ten.
Tommy Torres?
Present.
William Vega? I can see you, William, but I can't hear you. I mark your presence from the visual. Maria Viera? Maria Viera?
Present.
Stephen Weidberg?
Here.
Simon Wiser?
Didn't see you. Did you clear?
Twenty seven men's, twenty seven members answering the call, Madam Temporary Chair.
Gary, did you hear Marty Needleman? Did you hear me, Marty Needleman?
I hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Tommy Torres, Jerry?
I got you, Tommy.
And Marie Lianza?
I have you, Marie.
Jerry, did you hear me?
Who's, who is that?
Mario Tomerak?
Mary O'Dommerick.
I have you, yes.
And.
Okay, thank you.
And Jerry, this is Dell. Do you have Rabbi Needleman? I think I heard his voice.
Rabbi Needleman?
Yeah.
Rabbi Needleman, are you there?
Oh, maybe not.
Well, it shows him there.
He was there.
I thought I heard his voice.
He's there twice.
I doubt, we, we have a quorum.
Okay. All right. So. Um, okay. So what's next?
Approval of the agenda and then approval of the minutes. Did you, did you get the copy of the agenda that we sent to your phone?
I'm back on, Jerry.
So, um, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Did I hear Chair Fuller?
Yeah, I'm back on.
Oh, okay. Good.
Chair Fuller, we just did the roll call for the board meeting.
Okay. Uh, did you approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Bozina Kaminsky?
Second. We have to do, we have to do a roll call vote.
No one?
Yes. Can I have a roll call vote to approve the agenda, please? They can't hear me again?
I, I can hear you. Jerry?
We can hear you.
We hear you.
Okay. Hear Jerry.
Jerry, um, Gellis is asking for a roll call vote.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Gina Argento?
Approved.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi? Gina Barros?
Yes.
Tion Brooks? Eric Brusitis?
Yes.
Tom Burrows? Iris Cabrera? Phil Capone?
Yes.
Frank Carbone? Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Mike Chiracella? Teresa Cenciata? Giovanni D'Amato? Erin Drinkwater?
Present.
Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yeah.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Chairperson Fuller?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? Sonia Iglesias? Moisha Indig? Bozina Kaminsky?
Yes.
Avram Katz? William Claggs-Bald? Ryan Coonan? Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Here, yes.
Kim Liebovitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeva?
I'm not, you try. Yes.
McKeva?
Yes.
Sante Machelli? Sante Machelli?
You kidding me?
Martin Needleman?
Yes.
Karen, Rabbi Needleman? Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick?
Yes.
Jan Peterson?
Here. Here.
Jan Peterson?
Here.
It's not a here vote. It's a yes, no, or abstention.
Yes.
Dana Rackland? Dana Rackland?
Yes.
Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano?
Yes, Rob Solano, yes.
James Stewart? T.
Yes.
Tommy Torres?
Yes.
William Vega? William Vega? Maria Viera?
Yes.
I see a thumbs up, William. Thank you.
Mrs. Toby Moskowitz.
Stephen Weidberg?
Yes, yes.
All right, motion passes, Madam Chair.
Jerry, I, I didn't call my name, but I vote yes. It's Toby Moskowitz.
So noted.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. Thank everybody so much for your patience.
Thirty, the affirmative.
Thirty and affirmative? Thank you. So we have a quorum. Thank you, Jerry. Uh, can I have approval of the minutes, please? Roll call vote?
This is for approval of the minutes. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi? Gina Barros?
Yes.
Tion Brooks? Eric Brusitis?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera? Phil Capone?
Yes.
Frank Carbone? Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella? Teresa Cenciata? Giovanni D'Amato?
Yes, yes.
Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
T. Willis Elkins?
Yeah.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Chairperson Fuller? Joel Goldstein?
Yeah.
Joel Gross? Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Moisha Indig? Bozina Kaminsky? Bozina Kaminsky? William Claggs-Bald? Ryan Coonan?
Yes.
Yo Landau? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Abraham Liebovitz? Yo Lo? Trina McKeva? Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Thank you. Sante Machelli? Sante Machelli?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Martin Needleman?
Restain.
Rabbi Needleman? Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Dana Rackland? Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano? Kim Stewart? Dell Teague?
Yes.
Tommy Torres?
Yes.
William Vega?
I can't see what he's crying.
Yes, I see a thumbs up, William Vega. Maria Viera?
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg?
Yes.
Simon Wiser? All right, motion passes, Madam Chair. The minutes approved.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Uh, committee reports, Julie Foster, Bylaws Committee? Julie Foster?
Here.
Hi, everybody. Wait, I, I'm keep going in and out. I'm sorry. I hate this program. Hello, I'm back. Okay. Hi, everybody. I hope I'm doing this correctly. Okay, the Bylaws Committee, we met on August 12th. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. We met on August 12th at 6:30. In attendance was myself, co-chair Inglacia, Jess Love, Needleman, Peterson, Vega. Absent was Rabbi Goldstein. But we had a quorum. Also attending our meeting was, um, McKeva, Ms. Viera, and Ms. Cabrera. I hope I'm saying that correctly. As Chair of the Bylaws Committee, I officially rescinded the report. Both proposals that were made to the committee were withdrawn. The Bylaws Committee members had an open discussion prior to the meeting beginning call to order. Ms. Iglesias held the discussion because I have technical problems. After resolving the computer issue, I soon joined the meeting. Roll call, we had a roll call was conducted in order to open the meeting. There were five members present and we met as a quorum. Report referred back to Bylaws Committee. At the CB1 Board held on June 24th, the committee's report was tabled and, sorry, Chairperson Fuller sent it back to the committee. I, Julie Foster, as Chair to the committee, officially rescinded the report. Both proposals that were permit, that were made to the committee were withdrawn. Mr. Chesler made a motion to withdraw the committee, to redraw the report. The motion was seconded by Ms. Peterson. The members voted to withdraw the report. The committees voted as follows. Iglesias, yes. Chesler, yes. Needleman, yes. Peterson, Vega, yes. No no's and one abstention. Me. No recusal. Discussion of the vote, although proposals submitted by Ms. Peterson and Ms. McKeva were each individually withdrawn, there was still one item that came to the committee regarding vote, regarding voting by voice instead of paper ballot. That's gonna be interesting. Retention of this one item addresses how members would be able to vote in a virtual setting. In this time of COVID, where in-person voting cannot be held, such a proposal is seen as an essential change, is necessary for the community board to move forward and also for it to be in compliance with legal guidance. This point to modify the Brooklyn CB1 Bylaws use of voice in place of paper ballots is highly recommended. Proposal to go forward, the committee members agreed that such a proposal should be reintroduced for the board members' consideration. It is important that a vote on the proposal is carried out at the board meeting scheduled today. It's September 8, 2020. The Bylaws should further be amended to follow use of new electronic technology in the annual elections. The use of paper ballot is indicated. This should be deleted and replaced to allow elections to be held, elections to be conducted during video tell conference of meetings. I have my own opinions, but hey, this is what we're in right now. Number 10, voting. C. All actions taken by the board shall be made by open vote. A record of the position taken by each member shall be made by open vote. A record of the position taken by each member shall be recorded and maintained in the board's official files and shall be available for public inspection. The Bylaws Committee shall recommend the appropriate mechanisms through which this provision shall be implemented on voice, a voice vote via voice, or a vote, a vote by a show of hands. The secretary shall note all negative votes and abstentions, votes in the meeting minutes, under the elections, um, section. Proposals? Delete the use of paper ballots and implement the use of voice votes electronically. Delete the section crossed out and add the text that is underlined. Everybody following? Okay. Thank you. I see one head. Thank you. Section five, election of officers. Next page. Elections shall be conducted, electronic voting and held during a scheduled meeting of the board designated for elections. Each present member shall cast a vote for a declared candidate by the use of a voice via voice. Mr. Chesler made a motion to submit the above proposal for the Bylaws change for the board members to consider. The motion was seconded by Iglesias. The motion was anonymously, anonymously carried. The vote of the committee was as follows. Six yes, myself, Iglesias, Chesler, Needleman, Peterson, Vega. No no's, no abstention, no recusal. We, on the fifth item, we had an open discussion. It was further discussion amongst the committee members on possible proposals, the future Bylaw change, changes. Mr. Chesler spoke about a possible change for the Bylaws regarding elections. It was noted that any proposal would need to be formally introduced to the board's chairperson. The chairperson would then properly refer it to the Bylaws Committee for its review and recommendations. Mr. Chesler made a motion that this proposal for the Bylaws change is to be submitted to the chairperson, Ms. Fuller. The motion was seconded by Iglesias. The motion was anonymously carried out. The vote was yes, myself, Iglesias, Chesler, Needleman, Peterson, Vega. No abstentions, no no's, and no recusal. Chesler related that he would make the proposal and send it to the chairperson, to Chairperson Fuller. And then we had adjournment. Chesler made the motion to close the meeting. The motion was seconded by Vega and we were in favor. The meeting was adjourned. Da, 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 da. Post note. To the country by the Bylaws, Mr. Chesler sent to Madam Chair. Dear Madam Chair, dear Chairperson Fuller, enlightened distribution be caused by the coronavirus. Is somebody, hello? Somebody saying something? Coronavirus pandemic to the board's election schedule stipulated in the Bylaws, in the board's Bylaws. I'm submitting a proposal to amend the Bylaws, the board Bylaws related to the terms of officers and attendance committee members. Please see the proposal text below for your review. This amendment will allow the extension of those terms, which will allow the extension of those terms in the event that an elections are unable to be held in adherence to the timelines stipulated in the board Bylaws until elections are held. It should be noted that both Jan and Trina, we, Jan Peterson, I'm sorry, y'all, and Trina McKeva, I hope I'm saying it correctly, withdrew their original amendment proposals that included modifications to texts related to officers' terms. At last night's meeting on the 12th of August of the Bylaws Committee, additionally, the committee voted to withdraw its committee report from the June 4th, 2020 meeting, except for one provision related to the election. The election, the proposal amendment is as follows. Elections of officers, Part 5 and C elections. The terms of the officers elected at the board's election meeting shall commence on July 1st of that year and expire on June 30th of the following year. However, remember that word. However, in the event that elections cannot be held according to scheduled outline in the Bylaws, and in order to provide continually board officers and attendance committee terms shall be extended until elections can be held. So this was forward. So this was forwarded to the bylaws committee for consideration. Secondly, to your review, thank you, Stephen Chesler. Everybody was keeping up? Thank you, Vega.
Thank you, Julie. What's the committee recommendation? Is there any questions? I don't see any in the chat. Joanna, do you see any questions in the chat?
No. I don't see any other questions.
Is there a recommendation, need a vote? Motion?
Make a motion? Somebody make a motion?
More to Needleman, so moves. Accept the recommendations of the committee.
I second the motion.
I can, yeah.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Jerry, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Oh, I'm still here. Turn off the mic.
All right, so the motion is to approve the recommendations of the committee. The response should be yes, no, or abstain. Gina Argento.
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski. Bogdan Bakarowski.
Yes, yes.
Lisa Bamanthi. Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Tion Brooks. Tion Brooks. No vote. Eric Berzitis.
Yes.
Eric Berzitis votes yes. Tom Burrows.
Yes.
Mr. Burrows votes yes. Iris Cabrera. Iris Cabrera, no vote. Phil Caponegro.
Yes.
Mr. Caponegro votes yes. Frank Carbone. Frank, I know you're having trouble. Text me, and I will record your vote accordingly. I will announce it and record your vote accordingly. Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler votes yes. Michael Chiricella?
Yay.
Michael votes yes. Teresa Cinciatto? No vote. Mr., let the record show that Mr. Carbone just texted me with a yes. Giovanni D'Amato?
No.
Mr. D'Amato votes no. Erin Drinkwater? Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater votes yes. Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
Votes yes. Mr. Dibinowski votes yes. Mr. Elkins?
Abstain.
Mr. Elkins abstains. Ms. Foster? Julia?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Is that your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Foster votes yes. Joel Goldstein? No vote. Joel Gross? No vote. Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Sonia votes yes. Moisha Indig? Moisha Indig, no vote. Bosina Kaminski?
Yes.
Bosina Kaminski votes yes. Mr. Avram Katz? Avram Katz, no vote. William Claggsbald? Excuse me. Mr. Williams Clagbold, no vote. Ryan Coonan?
No.
Ryan Coonan votes no. Yolandau? Yolandau, no vote. Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Marie Lianza votes yes. Abraham Liebovitz? Abraham Liebovitz, no vote. Yolo? Yolo, no vote. Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Ms. McKeva votes yes. Sante Macheli?
Abstain.
Abstains. Toby Moskowitz?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz votes yes. Martin Needleman?
Yes.
Martin Needleman votes yes. Rabbi Needleman? Rabbi Needleman? No vote. Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Karen Nieves votes yes. Mary O'Dommerick?
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick votes yes. Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Janice Peterson votes yes. Dana Rackland?
Yes.
Dana Rackland votes yes. Isaac Soffer? Isaac Soffer. Rob Solano? Rob Solano? Rob Solano, no vote. James Stewart? James Stewart. Del Teague?
Yes.
Del Teague votes yes. Tommy Torres?
Yes, great job, Amanda.
Tommy Torres votes yes, I think. William Vega?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I heard you, thank you. Thank you. William Vega votes yes. Maria Vietta?
Yes.
Maria Vietta votes yes. Stephen Weidberg?
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg votes yes. Simon Weiser? No vote. Motion passes, 26 yes, two no, and two abstentions. Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Jerry. Thank you, committee. Next item on the agenda is land use, Del Teague.
Okay, so everyone, the Land Use Committee met on September 3rd. We had a public hearing and a committee meeting, and it was with regard to the presentation that you all heard earlier for 16 to 420 Kent Avenue. So I'm not going to waste anybody's time by going over it again. I will just mention that the committee members did express concern that we were not, that the community board was not kept apprised of what was going on, and the applicants actually joined us and said that it was actually uncomfortable for them to have to come to us after the fact when everything was done. And they were very supportive of our sending a letter to the city and state officials saying that, looking, saying, demanding that if any of the agencies either request or require a change in plans that we have that we have approved, that we be kept apprised and be given the opportunity to participate as things go along. Be that as it may, we heard only positive things from the community with respect to this development. Our concern, of course, was for the grass. However, it just, the committee just voted in favor of approving the application. It just seemed that they had made real, very good faith efforts to try to keep the grass in place, but that it just is in a situation that doesn't really lend itself to passive use. And so, although we had 10 people at the committee, it was, when it came time to vote, we couldn't access everybody. So the vote was was six to one, six people in favor, one person against. So I need a vote on that. And then I will also need a vote on sending out the letter, which we unanimously approved. So we need a vote on whether or not to approve the application or to, in favor of what the committee suggested.
Just a quick clarification, Del, if I may. You did not have a quorum of the committee, so this is just a
No, it's just my recommendation.
Recommendation of those present.
Exactly, that's right. It's just a recommendation, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Del. Can we have a roll call vote? I know everybody's tired, and I'm sorry, I had a technical difficulty. So when we do the vote, can we vote? Just tell Jerry that, yes, you're voting for both items. Whatever, if you're voting for one item, tell them what item you're voting for. If you're voting for yes for both items, tell Jerry, yes, both items. If you're voting for one item, tell Jerry, yes, on the item that you're voting on and vote for the other.
Well, Dealice, I don't know what you mean by two items. We just approved
You need two votes.
The application, but I also needed a vote on, I needed a vote also on sending a letter.
That's the two votes.
Okay, great.
That's the two votes. We're voting on your land use item, and we're voting on your letter.
Okay.
That's why I said, you know, we do both at the same time. So if they're voting no for the latter, they can say no for the latter, yes for the land use item, or vice versa. So we don't have to do it twice.
Thank you.
Is that clear to everybody?
Yeah, but I'd like to make a motion to amend the recommendation that the developer try and include plantings in the gravel area, based on the conversation that took place during the hearing.
I'm fine with amending it to ask the developer to try to add some more plantings. So I see that as a friendly, you know, amendment.
I'm sorry.
I second.
I second the amendment.
Okay, so Steve would like to, Steve Chesler would like to add to the recommendation that the developer try to add plantings to the area that is going to replace the grass. They will be having more seeding in that area, and I think it's a very good, I think it's a friendly, you know, amendment to ask them to try to add some more plantings to that area.
Okay, so now we got three votes.
No, just two votes, just.
He's asking for an amendment. You gotta vote for the amendment, and you gotta revoke.
It's just a friendly amendment. It's just a friendly amendment. I would recommend, you know, as the chair of the committee that Steve's amendment be incorporated. There's nothing about what Steve just suggested that changes anything. No one at the committee would have been against their trying to put in some plantings if they could.
Okay, so we still got two votes.
Still two votes.
You want to say something, Jerry?
I mean, you really, it's going to be very difficult to tally a vote where you're saying yes on one and no on the other. You should really try to take this as a package, since it's, that's the recommendation.
Okay, well, and this includes the latter also. Okay, so we're voting for three items, the amendment, the land use item, and the latter, a recommendation. So it's three items that we are voting on.
What point of order, but the letter is going to agencies, isn't it?
Yes.
The latter's what?
It's intended to go to agencies, basically calling them to revise their process, that they should have notified the community board prior to this modification going through, not after the fact.
And that in the future, they should keep us as a part of the, keep us in the picture. So that, and it's also better for the applicants. It was very uncomfortable for them to have to come hat in hand to say, well, please, please approve it, even though we know we've already done it. But our feeling was that they made these, for the most part, made all the modifications because they were really told that they had to, you know, because of the requirements of the fire department and the NDEC.
Okay, so is it clear to all the board members that you're voting for three items?
Yes.
I don't see where there are three items. I think adding plantings to the lawn area is just a friendly amendment to what I recommended.
Just two, you're saying?
It's just two items. It's just the application and then also the letter.
Can we have a roll call vote, Jerry?
So the recommendation is to approve the consensus of the committee with the additions as stated by the committee chair, right, Del?
Yes.
Okay. So your vote should be yes, no, or abstain, or abstention on the consensus recommendation. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bamanthi? No vote. Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Gina Barrows votes yes. Tion Brooks? Tion Brooks, no vote. Eric Berzitis?
Yes.
Eric Berzitis votes yes. Tom Burrows?
No.
Burrows votes no. Iris Cabrera? Iris Cabrera, no vote. Phil Caponegro?
Yes.
Phil Caponegro votes yes. Frank Carbone? Frank Carbone votes yes. Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler votes yes. Michael Chiricella?
Yay.
Michael Chiricella votes yes. Teresa Cinciatto, no vote. Giovanni D'Amato?
No.
Giovanni D'Amato votes no. Erin Drinkwater?
No.
Erin Drinkwater votes no. Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
Dibinowski votes yes. T. Willis Elkins?
No.
T. Willis Elkins votes no. Julia Amanda Foster?
Abstention.
Abstain. Julia Amanda Foster abstains. Joel Goldstein? No vote. Joel Gross, no vote. Sonia Iglesias? Sonia Iglesias?
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias votes yes. Moisha Indig? Moisha Indig? Bosina Kaminski?
Yes.
Bosina Kaminski votes yes. Avram Katz? Avram Katz, no vote. William Claggsbald? Williams Clagbold, no vote. Ryan Coonan?
No.
Coonan votes no. Yolandau? Yolandau, no vote. Marie Lianza? Marie Lianza?
Yes.
Yes. Marie Lianza votes yes. Abraham Liebovitz? Abraham Liebovitz, no vote. Yolo? Yolo, no vote. Trina McKeva? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Trina.
Yes.
Trina McKeva votes yes. Sante Macheli?
No.
Macheli votes no. Toby Moskowitz? Moskowitz, I'm sorry. Toby Moskowitz? Vote. Martin Needleman?
Yes.
Martin Needleman votes yes. Rabbi Needleman? Rabbi Needleman, no vote. Karen Nieves?
Yes.
Karen Nieves votes yes. Mary O'Dommerick?
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick?
She said yes.
Yes.
Mary O'Dommerick votes yes. Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Janice Peterson votes yes. Dana Rackland?
Yes.
Dana votes yes. Isaac Soffer? Rob Solano? Rob Solano, no vote. James Stewart? James Stewart, no vote. Del Teague?
Yes.
Del Teague votes yes. Tommy Torres?
Yes.
Tommy Torres votes yes. William Vega?
Yes.
Votes yes. Maria Vietta?
Yes.
Maria Vietta votes yes. Stephen Weidberg?
Yes.
Stephen Weidberg votes yes. Simon Weiser? Motion passes, 23 yes, six no, one abstention.
Okay, that's it for my report. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Stephen Chesler, Environmental Protection Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 11th, Environmental Protection Committee met, and in attendance were myself, Willis Elkins, and Laura Hoffins, a non-board member. Absent Trina McKeva, Eric Berzitis, William Claggsbald, Gillo, Janice Peterson, and a non-board member, Kevin Costa. Trina was intending to attend, but she had not one but two flat tires in transit. where she was going to connect. Um, there are two items that we addressed. Also, we did not have a quorum, but we didn't have any, we did not have voting, voting, voting items. An additional board members present were Tion Brooks and Marty Mewman. The, uh, the first item was a, uh, brownfield cleanup program related to thirty-four Berry Street, which is on the corner of North Twelfth. Um, you know, a lot, I'm, I'm not gonna read, um, entire, you know, written report. It's quite detailed, so I encourage you to go back and read it in the attached, uh, present, presentation. We, you know, we get these reports coming through the board to our committee on a regular basis for volunteer cleanup programs, brownfield cleanup, and Superfund. But, um, I don't know if people are aware of this, of this property, but it, you know, it, it, it's an already developed building with, um, with a lot of apartments and residents already, you know, um, who've been living there for ten years. And so that's, we, we requested that Department of Environmental Conservation come in. And so Jane H. O'Connell, who's a regional remediation engineer for DEC, came in and presented. Um, the, essentially, the, the site, you know, its biggest use, you know, historically was a quinine factory and there were other chemicals that were stored on site. And then there were other, uh, less nefarious uses, not nefarious, but toxic uses, um, you know, more recently. And then it was, the building, the, the previous structures were demolished and it was developed in, um, in, in two thousand nine. Um, and at the time, you know, uh, petroleum was discovered and the combination of the, uh, sub, you know, subslab and remediation, uh, procedures, they proceeded with developing the building and, um, and getting, you know, a certificate of occupancy. But, um, in two thousand seventeen, through, um, except more, you know, additional testing, we discovered that there is a chlorinated solvent, you know, a massive plume under the entire property, um, which is called one-two di, uh, core, um, one-two DCA, um, which is a, um, volatile organic camp, compound. And the, so the developer has gone through numerous steps in the process of doing an investigation with DEC and putting an interim remediation measure in place, which is essentially, um, you know, extracting product, including, uh, the petroleum plume, which is more extensive than they originally, um, found. There are probably over, not probably, there are two, over two dozen monitoring wells on site and adjacent to the site. The, the plume essentially covers about half of the property, you know, the main, the, the chlorinated solvent plume and extends about halfway into Berry Street. Um, and they, at this stage, they're, they're devising a, um, remedial access working plan, essentially the means by which they're going to remediate examination. And that decision will be, be made in, um, this month supposedly, at this time. Um, and so, um, there, you know, was a rigorous, rigorous discussion ensued after the presentation. And essentially, we asked them, you know, you know, how the heck did, was this massive, this additional plume not discovered, um, earlier? And DEC says, essentially, they only test for petroleum. They don't test these other chemicals. It's just that they happen to, you know, um, you know, show themselves during, during that testing, then, then they deal with it. Which I found, you know, we found alarming. Um, and the, the remediation and the air monitoring is taking place in the basement parking garage. Um, you know, the question was put to them, why isn't there air monitoring throughout, you know, for the residential portions of the building? They said they're only required to do it in the, in the parking garage area. Um, and partly what prompted our bringing the DEC into, talk about this is, um, the notice was posted to a neighborhood Facebook page and, uh, one person who, who posted with a former tenant of the building, who lived there for six years, and said the year after they moved out, her son contracted, uh, cancer. And, um, you know, and just developed that, the woman, uh, messaged me at one point and said he, he's in remission. But, um, but, you know, Laura Hoffman asked him, so it just, you know, a health study should absolutely be done. And DEC did not really respond to that, to that, um, demand. And, um, so it just, unfortunately, it's just kind of left in the current state that it is, that they're just going to remediate the product. Um, in the report, which you can see online, and it, I should also note, in the, the, um, Jane O'Connell's presentation, which will also be attached, there are links to the webpage and DEC's website with, you know, detailed coverage of, uh, you know, various, all the aspects of the, um, of the program. Um, but it, but she also, what she reiterated is that basically the building's safe. There's little, little or no threat of vapor intrusion into the building. And, um, and, and unfortunately, there was a reporter from the Brooklyn paper, Kevin Dugan, who covered it and uh, printed a article about it, um, two days later and created awareness about it, so. Um, so that's, and, you know, also noted that, you know, the developer basically can get credit for his cleanup. He remarked that he was, the rents that people are paying to live there, uh, it's just, uh, just really, really incredible that they're receiving tax credits for building on top of this, um, uh, this toxic land. Um, so that's basically where that was left. Um, you know, we're, you know, considering maybe bringing in other, they bring a DOH and having, uh, you know, additional conversation about, um, this matter. The, uh, the second item was an update on National Grid North Brooklyn Pipeline Expansion in rate case. By, um, it's rented by Kim Frechek and Lee Zissinger from St. Energy. They, you know, they were in the board, um, you know, earlier in the year regarding this matter. And essentially, they, um, National Grid is finishing up, they have, there are five phases of this, um, thirty-inch pipeline that they're laying from Brownsville to, to Greenpoint. Right now, they're on East Williamsburg-Bushwick, uh, finishing up phase four and they're beginning phase five. Um, and they, you know, officially, they're looking for a rate crisis case, which is essentially a rate increase that they want from Public Service Commission at the state level to help fund these, uh, last two phases to the amount of hundred five, hundred eighty-five million dollars. Um, St. Energy and what's called the North, uh, No North Brooklyn Pipeline Coalition has basically generated thousands of, of, um, voice comments and written testimony, all calling against, you know, killing this pipeline, defeating the rate case. Um, and right now, they're, um, basically, it's, you know, it's, it's, there's negotiations going on right now about how it's gonna play out. Uh, one other factor is that, you know, the, this, uh, the city basically passed a law that essentially, um, um, bans, you know, expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure in, in New York City. So the focus of the, um, the resistance is on him right now. Because one of the, um, you know, end, end goals of this pipeline is to reach a liquid, uh, natural gas terminal on Newtown Creek, which they want to expand and which essentially enable trucks to, um, move the product to other areas like Long Island and out of state. And those types of trucks are just incredibly volatile. If they were to explode, it would just be, just horrific and devastating. And so they need a special permit from the city to do that, so. So the, 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 the resistance coalition is, um, really putting on the mayor and, uh, the city to, to not issue that permit. And so one thing they also asked of us was, was for the board to write a letter to the mayor urging him not to, to, you know, to not issue a permit and to stick to the law. And so we're in the process of drafting that and that'll come up the next committee meeting and then the next full board meeting for consideration. And that is, um, that is it. Oh, I also just want to add that the, um, the presentation for St. Energy is also attached to the report. The points and ways that, uh, you and networks can join the coalition if you choose to resist.
Thank you, Chesler.
Yep.
Uh, next item, uh, Tom Burrow.
Are we asking questions or just commenting and chatting? Are we asking questions or just commenting and chat? Hello?
I'm happy to, uh, to field questions. I'm, um.
Well, I didn't know, I was just saying, is that, I mean, it's quite an unbelievable report you just gave. I mean, I'm, frankly, I'm stunned. Am I the only one in the room stunned by these? And I guess I won't know what you wanted us to do about just to agree to support this last thing.
Um, well, one thing I, yeah, I failed to mention is that the developers are required to notify all the tenants that, um, what is going on with this, the state of the property and the remediation. And DEC said that they distributed the brownfield cleanup notice to the tenants as well.
Uh-huh.
The reporter, uh, interviewed tenants going in and out. Some of them didn't, knew nothing about the situation and indicated that the landlords or the property owners' notice uh, seemed deceptive, not really, you know, spilling out what's really going on, unfortunately. So, um, it's, it did get pressed, um, you know, and, yeah, we were discussing what further, what further we, we could do.
Okay.
Thank you, Chesler. Next item on the agenda is Tom Burrow's update.
Oh, sorry.
Tom.
Okay, sorry. Everybody on the board, please print out your agenda, which has the liquor license list under the public hearing agenda. As I said earlier, there's forty-five new and sixty-seven renewal. I do know that some of those licenses have been suspended because of COVID- nineteen violations. I do know some of them have noise and police problems. But I can't know every bar in the entire Community Board One area. So please go through the list and make note of any ones that you have particular problems with or ones you really like a lot or anything like that, so that the committee can make responsible decisions at our meeting. And our next meeting is on the twenty-second. Um, I don't know how we're gonna do it with that many applications. I'm trying to work out with my committee how to wheel, you know, wean certain things out, so. But please go through the list, because I don't want to hear about it after the fact that some bar that's been, you know, the horror of all times got approved by us, okay? That's all I want to emphasize.
Thank you, Tom. That concludes our committee reports.
Oh, De'Allis.
Yes. Pardon me?
Chair Fuller, I just have, um, I, I'd emailed you about, uh, one vote that we needed to do for transportation.
I did not get an email on you. Uh, we sent out two notices asking chairpersons that they wanted to give a report, an update, to let us know. I did not have anything down that you want to speak.
Okay, but then we also talked about it as well.
Pardon me?
We also spoke about it as well. I thought it, I thought I had seen it forwarded to the, to the board.
I don't, I don't have you down if you want to speak.
Well, I can, I can be quick. It's one item.
Okay, you can be quick, but let's just emphasize this to all chairpersons. We sent out a notice asking chairpersons to let us know if they want to speak. I would appreciate it if everybody would follow this, so we can make these meetings as seamless as possible, so we'll know who's speaking. Okay, Eric?
Okay, so, yes, I'm sorry about that. I did send it last week, but whatever. Anyway, so, um, we did not have a, uh, we did not have a, a meeting. Thanks, Will. Uh, we did not have a meeting, uh, this summer, but, um, we did take up the item of two hundred Kent. Um, uh, back in February, the board had voted to approve it with three conditions. Um, one was that, uh, the Trader Joe's, uh, that's moving into the retail space and the developer, Mr. Rosen, um, come to some agreement that, uh, they would not allow trucks larger than fifty-three feet, uh, to access the loading zone. Uh, and this is, uh, just to refresh your memory, this is to, um, change the direction of River Street to allow for trucks to enter and, um, uh, enter and egress the, uh, the area around two hundred Kent, which is Metropolitan to North Third. Um, so the first condition was to, uh, not allow fifty-three-foot trucks. Second condition was to, uh, introduce a dedicated spotlight, um, at Metropolitan and Kent to allow, uh, safer crossings for pedestrians and cyclists. And another, um, stop control at, um, North Third and, uh, and Kent. Um, those conditions, um, we did receive a letter that was forwarded, um, I believe yesterday, from, um, the firm, uh, Stuart Schwartz, that's, uh, representing the, the client in this matter, that they would commit to, um, keeping the size of the trailers to, uh, the, the smaller size, the fifty-eight foot. Um, and not allowing, which is actually fifty-one without, with all the, uh, the cab and everything else. But, um, we did receive that letter with that commitment from them. Um, uh, DOT, uh, needs to go through its regular bureaucratic process to establish, uh, uh, warrants for the turn signals, so although the, uh, committee, uh, did, um, almost insist that we have that stop, uh, uh, the turn control at, at Metropolitan and Kent, it does need to go through the, the regular DOT review. Um, I, based on our letter to DOT, um, uh, we submitted, uh, the board submitted, uh, two requests to study those two intersections. Um, and because this is a major, uh, change, if the, uh, if the, um, the study doesn't warrant, uh, a signal change, um, now, uh, we can reapply within the thirty-six-month window because there is a major change, uh, in the traffic pattern. So, uh, DOT will have a better idea of, uh, before and after, um, so we can better assess the safety there. So, um, the DOT does need to move ahead with, uh, the direction change from River Street. Um, so, um, based on the, uh, goodwill of, uh, the developer and Trader Joe's, as well as the process going forward with DOT, um, I'd just like to recommend somebody make a motion to approve the, um, uh, the direction change for River Street.
I make a motion. Del Teague.
Phil Caponegro, second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
You want to just re, repeat the motion?
Yes, the motion is to approve the committee's recommendation from February. To approve the direction change based on, uh, a good faith effort to meet our conditions. The board's conditions. Does that work? It's basically a follow-up vote to the February vote.
Can we do a roll call vote, Jerry?
Yes. You hear me?
Yes.
So the motion is to approve the recommendation from the committee. Your, your vote response should be yes, no, or abstain. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Yes.
Ogden Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Bemonte? Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Deion Brooks? Eric Presides?
Yes.
Tom Burrows?
I'm voting yes, and Lisa Bemonte just said she couldn't get on by web, but she would vote yes.
She's having trouble with her computer.
Yeah.
Iris Cabrera? Philip Caponegro?
Yes.
Phil votes yes. Frank Carbone? Frank Carbone votes yes. Stephen Chesler?
Yes.
Stephen Chesler votes yes. Michael Chiracella?
Yay.
Michael Chiracella votes yes. Tricia Sinciaro? Giovanni Damato?
Yes.
Giovanni votes yes. Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Erin votes yes. Arthur Dubinowski?
Yes.
Arthur votes yes. T. Willis Hawkins?
Yes.
Timothy votes yes. Julia Manda Foster?
Yes.
Julia votes yes. Joel Goldstein? Joel Goldstein, no vote. Joel Gross? Joel Gross, no vote. Sonia Iglesias? Sonia Iglesias? No vote. Moisa Indig? Moisa Indig? Ozina Kaminsky?
Yes.
Ozina votes yes. Avram Katz? Avram, no vote. William Claggsbald? William Claggsbald, no vote. Ryan Coonan?
Yes.
Ryan votes yes. Yo Landau? Yo Landau, no vote. Marie Leanza? Marie Leanza?
Yes.
Marie votes yes. Abraham Liebovitz? Abraham? Abraham, no vote. Yolo? Yolo, no vote. Trina McKeva?
Yes.
Trina votes yes. Sante Pacelli?
Abstained.
I'm sorry?
Abstained.
Abstained. Sante abstains. Toby Moskovitz? Toby Moskovitz, no vote. Martin Needleman?
Yes.
Martin Needleman votes yes. Sonia Iglesias just texted me, her Wi-Fi went down. I vote yes.
Yes, I'm back on, yes.
Oh, we're back on, huh?
Thanks, yes.
You're all around. All right, thank you. Rabbi Needleman? Rabbi Needleman, no vote. Karen Yezes?
Yes.
Karen votes yes. Mary O'Domeric?
Yes.
Mary votes yes. Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Janice votes yes. Dana Rackland?
Yes.
Dana votes yes. Isaac Soffer? Isaac Soffer, no vote. Robert Solano?
Yes.
Robert Solano votes yes. James Stewart? James, no vote. Del Teague?
Yes.
Del votes yes. Tommy Torres? Tommy votes yes. William Vega?
Yes.
William votes yes. Maria Viera? Maria Viera? Give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down. I can't hear you, but I can see you.
Yes.
Thumbs up, okay, thank you. Steven Weidberg?
Yes.
Steven Weidberg votes yes. Simon Weiser? No vote. Thirty yes, zero no, one abstention, motion passes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Transportation Committee is going to have a vote, uh, meeting Thursday, next Thursday, the 14th, I think. The, you know, the agenda will be amended. Right now, it's Broadway stages. Looking for an Open Streets application, but there may be additional items and that's it. Thanks.
It's Monday, so you're talking about the 17th, I think, Thursday.
Seventeenth, yes, thank you.
It's a good thing you want to be quick, Eric. Thank you.
Hey, sorry.
Yeah, so much for quick.
Hey.
Hey, we still here. Thank you, Eric. Jan, did you speak after the moment of silence?
No.
Okay, you can do it now.
Okay, I just wanted to, the Women's Issues Committee has been talking about how to give recognition and honor the people that since the end of February in our neighborhood who have been doing work to help mitigate the impact of the coronavirus. And I just want to list some of the names that people have put forward in more, I was going to have it in the quiet time, but just to list, but there are others. And I would like you to send in to me and to other people on the committee the names of people that, and organizations that have really helped do the opposite, I think, of the census, but who really have gone out of their way to make a difference. And some of the names that have come up is, first of all, Swinging Sixties with John Pell and his whole team in the beginning days staying in and cooking and delivering food to people like Tish and her husband and people throughout the neighborhood. Deborah Bender's at Cooper Park, who has provided, uh, created a way to provide hundreds of people in Cooper Park food and distribute food because people don't go in to distribute. Uh, and she's also, they've also, Cooper has also provided food to other organizations in the neighborhood that didn't have food. There is, uh, I don't know, Sonia Velasquez, U N C C A. St. Lucy's Old Roman Catholic Church was nominated. Neil Sheehan and Felice Kirby, North Brooklyn Angels, who I think have gone everywhere because they certainly went to Cooper and they went all over. Tina Shipman from Bushwick Houses. Blair Pog, Pog, Pogno. Josh Cohen, owners of the Jimmy Diner, La Service. We certainly know that Salerno Garage was all over TV for waiving people's rent for all those buildings near the garage and other things that Salerno did. Saint Nick's Alliance has been, and I know Marie Leanza is part of that, calling every super that's living in the, in the senior housing to make sure they're okay, but delivering food, taking care of needs that have arisen. The Bushwick Generator, which I don't know what that is, but has provided food and support. And I will stop at that and just say, we, I think on behalf of the Community Board One, it's very important to recognize the incredible things that people do. I know I've seen some, many board members here that have gone out of their way. This was not a definitive list, but it would be very nice if people here would just quietly nominate people. We can send out a form, but I don't think it's necessary. People and organizations that you think, and that Rabbi Needleman and others, I know that there is an ambulance, the ambulance from, that's a lab, ambulance, has not only been carrying people in your community, but trying to keep them out of the hospital and providing oxygen tanks. So I think it would be very good for us to, we want to compile a report and make a formal recognition. And so on behalf of the board, I want to thank you. We want to thank you all for the work you've done. And obviously, if we've left somebody out, you're going to send it in. We've done the best we can with the communication systems before us now.
Hey, Jan, can I add to this? St. John's Church?
Please do. I appreciate it greatly.
They give food to the pantry three days out of the week, and they've been doing it since March.
Wow.
And Jason Tabor, the pastor, just left, and he should be recognized for his hard work.
That I will put down, and I think, and these are people that don't have much money. And churches that don't have much, but way out of their way.
Eight days out of the week.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Jan. I think we should add Jared Esposito to that list for making, just keeping our office open every day since we've been in the pandemic. We hold all the community calls. We thank you, Jared, for doing that.
And Marie, I think.
Maria and Joanna. Jared's been there every day though.
Wow.
Let's add the office, let's add, let's add Community Board One office to the list.
I definitely got it right there.
Thank you so much. Okay.
I add Jessica Rocho, Community Relations from Woodhull Hospital.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jan. If anybody else have anything that they want to add, please send us an email to the office and we'll get it to Jan because we want to recognize anybody and everybody that, uh, what they did to help us get through this pandemic and still doing. So we don't want to leave anybody out. So anybody that know of anybody, please send an email to the office so we can get it to Jan. Thank you. Jared, do we have any elected officials that, to speak, that signed up to speak?
Do you have any electeds?
Yes, we had, um, Mr. Levin, Steve Levin?
Hi, everybody. Follow. Sorry. Hmm. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry I'm echoing so much. I'll turn mine down. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, we're all having technical difficulty tonight, Steve.
Okay, I'm seeing a thumbs up, okay. Hi, everybody. So, um, I wanted to say a few words about the budget, the fiscal '21 budget. And first off, I, Trina wrote, if I had an update on the National Grid Pipeline at the PSC. I just looked through the PSC's agenda from June through August, and I didn't see anything. That doesn't mean it didn't happen. I just, I didn't see anything in the PSC. I'm not like, I don't know the PSC agenda that well to know what to look for exactly, but I don't see it as having been voted on by the PSC. But I will, I will look more into that, Trina, and get back to you. So, um, this year's budget was, you know, by far the worst budget we've had in a few generations. We had a, um, a budget deficit of about $9 billion. That opened up from, from, you know, early March until, until we passed the budget in late June. And that's, you know, that's close to 10% of our budget. It's just a massive amount to come up so quickly. I mean, we didn't even, you know, it was, we had, we hadn't even contemplated that in the preliminary budget presented by the mayor in, um, in January. So, um, and then we were faced with this kind of unfortunate set of circumstances as well because the mayor wanted to get borrowing power, but needed that borrowing power from Albany. And I think Albany was disinclined to allow the mayor to borrow because they didn't see him as, you know, being a, um, you know, really, uh, thoughtful steward of the public, the public purse. So, um, so they didn't give him borrowing authority. And, um, and then we did not get any help from Washington because Mitch McConnell continues to hold up any, um, any COVID-related stimulus. And so, you know, we had hoped, we had hoped that we were going to get a federal stimulus by May, and we didn't get anything. So, um, so there we were in, in June, trying to deal with, you know, $9 billion. And we were able to get some out of reserves, um, attrition, things like that. But when the rubber met the road, we saw cuts. We saw cuts. We tried to avoid layoffs. There were seasonal workers that were not rehired. So we saw, um, uh, most notably, I think, parks, seasonal workers were not rehired. The, the POP program, the Parks Opportunity Program. So that means that there were a lot of, uh, summer workers that were not there for the Parks Department. But we didn't have layoffs per se in the Parks Department. But, uh, as you all know, the city's still fixing layoffs, and the mayor's threatening 22,000 layoffs. And, uh, we still don't have borrowing authority, and we still don't have, um, any, any, any word from Washington whatsoever, anything close to an agreement between the House and the Senate. So, um, so we're on, we're on our own as a city. We have, we're just, we're spending for ourselves. And, um, so we, at the council, made a lot of cuts, a lot of cuts into discretionary programs, things that we had built up over years, mostly programmatic dollars, but you'll see it. You'll see it in sanitation cuts, so basket service and things like that. You'll see it in your parks. You'll see it, you know, with just, it's attrition, there's a hiring freeze. We, obviously, you know that the most kind of controversial aspect of this all was the NYPD budget. We did cut, um, $420 million of the NYPD budget out of a budget of about, uh, close to $6 billion. And that's, that was real cuts, so that, most of it was overtime. And overtime, it's complicated because overtime, you know, it accrues over the course of the year. But, uh, they have, they agreed to give us a kind of, you know, I don't know if it's monthly or bi-weekly accounting of overtime spending. And so far, it has not gone over what they had committed to. So so far, it's, it's along the trajectory that we had agreed on. And it's not, and they're not over, overspending on, on overtime. We will continue to keep a close eye on that because that's not the kind of thing that will just explode overnight. It'll be, if it was to go over, it would be going over monthly. So, but we, but, you know, we anticipate a $420 million cut to NYPD in addition to the overtime. There are no layoffs, but there were two classes that got canceled, two NYPD classes. So out of four for the year. So, um, so that will mean less cops hired this year. So, I mean, this was, this was brutal. I felt an obligation to vote for the budget. Antonio, my colleague, voted against the budget, but we were both on the budget negotiating team, you know, in, in, on Zoom, in the Zoom room for, you know, hours and hours on end, you know, going into every line of this budget. I felt an obligation to vote for it, in the sense because it was so awful that, um, you know, I felt like somebody had to do it because it's not just one agency that gets funded in this budget. It's not just the NYPD budget. It's not just, you know, this is, it's everything. Every budget, every agency budget was in, was, was there, and, you know, hard decisions had to get made. And so I felt some obligation to do that, knowing that it was, you know, a kind of no-win politically. But, um, you know, among other things, the, the City Council discretionary funding to Community Boards that got cut. So I'm sorry about that, but, um, that got exed out. And hopefully that can get restored, you know, if we're able to get the revenue back. But, um, as it were, that's, that's, that's gone for FY '21. And happy to answer any questions about it. I don't have it like all at the tip of my fingers, but if I don't have the answer, I'll, I'll get back to whoever asked a question.
Thank you. We ask people to put questions in the chat. Joanna, is there any questions in the chat?
No, there's no, no questions.
All right, thanks, everybody, and I'm, I'm around. So, you know, feel free to reach out to me or anyone on my staff, and, um, I'm, I'm here. I'm here for at least the next, uh, 18 months or so, so.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Fifteen months.
Thank you so much, Steve. We appreciate the update.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Bye.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is Parks Department.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, there's another speaker?
During public session, we had one person who submitted written testimony, but I see that he's here as an attendee. Do you just want to acknowledge you have his testimony?
Did we have a call, uh? Did we have a call Senator Kavanaugh and and
No, not yet, because we jumped over with the elected official that was present. Kevin, Kevin Norby called in the beginning. There was no show. And same thing with Salazar's office. There was no show. That was in the beginning. And I don't see them.
Okay, I know that the mayor's office wanted to speak. Well, the Parks Department, next item on the agenda is Parks Department as read. So we have no other public speakers.
This is Edward from the mayor's office, if I can get.
Wait, Edward, you're coming under the electives. We're in the public session now. So Marie, there's no other, there's no other.
There's just this one gentleman. I I don't know if he wants to speak. But he did send written testimony. I'll I'll see if he's he wants to say something.
Is he on the phone or?
Yeah, he just texted in the chat that he wants to speak. Is it Bartley Cohen? Marie?
Yeah, I see. I see some. Is that me, Bartley Cohen? Mr. Cohen, are you there?
He's he's on as a panelist, but I don't know why he's not speaking.
Okay.
He's not able to speak, but we have his written testimony.
Okay, so we can distribute that to the board. Okay, no other speakers, public officials. Jared, do you have a list? I know we have Edward, Mr. Sinaro from the mayor's office. And I know he's been waiting a long time. Okay, Edward.
Good night, everyone. You know.
Good evening.
Good evening, right. It's pretty late. So I'll be brief. First, I want to echo the the comments made by the chair about the the board staff. They've been really proud throughout this pandemic. And so, you know, my I tip my hat off to Jerry, Marie, Joanna, because when we were at the height of this, they were really responsive to to my inquiries. So just want to, you know, give shout out to them as well. And so far as my update, I just want to echo some of the things that the mayor spoke about during his media availability this morning, namely that, you know, hopefully everyone had a good Labor Day weekend. But if you traveled outside of New York City, there are 33 states and territories that if you travel to them, it is, you know, the safe thing and the mindful thing for you to isolate for at least 14 days upon your return. Some of these states include Alabama, Alaska, North Dakota, Oklahoma, Mississippi, Texas, and some of the territories are like Guam, Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico. So if you've traveled, again, we want to keep up the good work that the city is doing and all of you New Yorkers have been doing and driving down this pandemic. And so the only thing I would add to that point is if you want to get tested, you can go to New York City Health and Hospitals. They have some of the the best turnaround times right now. The nearest site to Board One, or at least in the in the areas, Jonathan Williams Houses or Gotham Health, which is 333 Vogland Street, they have COVID testing and antibody testing. They're open Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM, and Saturday and Sunday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Lastly, again, I'll be brief until we've been long, is on the school opening. Today was the first day that teachers reported to duty. Teachers will start instructing kids remotely as they continue to prepare for in-person classes. And then on Monday, September 21, it's when we'll have the first day of like blended blended learning where some students will report at a certain part of the week and then will be remote on the second path or, you know, whatever the breakup is. As part of that, the mayor also announced the Learning Bridges Program, which is going to provide free childcare supervision to childrens from pre-K and K through E, because some folks go to work and they need childcare in order to, you know, attend remotely. So if folks are interested in that, they can go to newyorksschools.myc.gov/learningbridges and they can learn more on that. So I think I'll keep it there. Again, thank you, everyone, for your dedication for staying so long. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Um, okay, I see that we have a Ms. Sharon Pope-Marshall that wants to speak. Let me just make this announcement. The public elected officials, we have a spot for them. We sent out emails. We asked everybody to send an email in advance to the office so that we know you want to speak. Anybody that want to speak in the public session, we also would like for you to send an email to the office so we'll know that you want to speak. That's the only way we can make this seem as possible is that we know who going to speak and then we we call that name. Ms. Pope, are you ready to speak? Marsha, Ms. Pope, Marsha? Apparently she's are you having she's having technical difficulty? Okay, apparently she's not able to speak. Is there any new business? Is there any old business?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Well, first I'll just that the
Can anybody hear me?
We'll never be quite home tonight.
Who are you? My name is Sharon Sharon Pope. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. In the future, Ms. Pope, if you'd like to speak, send us an email to the office, please.
Would am I being allowed to? Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Do I have the opportunity to speak now? Or should I send an email to the office? It's it's up to the board.
She's on. Let her go.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
She's waited this long.
Let her speak.
Okay, first of all, thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to to speak, Madam Chair, and also community board members. Thank you. I represent Bike New York. And this is a tough situation with the pandemic. Since 1977, we have been biking the streets of New York City. We know that this city and state is New York tough and Bike New York is New York tough. I want you to know that we have created our very first virtual event, which I will put in the chat. It's called Spoketober. And it's it was created to be family friendly, very low
Can anybody hear her?
No.
No.
No, no.
She is cut out.
No. The chats, look over here.
I was just request that the revision of the revised bylaws if could be posted to the website just for, you know. And the now that the bylaws have been revised to allow for electronic elections, can the election process proceed with nominations and the elections in near future?
I think I think we're gonna need a month and a year and a date to start this. I didn't see no starting period, no starting time. How about a month? How about the bylaws committee tell us when they want to start?
Well, it seems like it's at the discretion of the board.
Julia Foster, we didn't come up with a date. And sitting as the chair and watching this program and watching this webpage, I think there's still some kinks that need to be worked out before we make a final decision to move forward as to picking a date. I go in and out, chair people go in and out, people that are here can't speak. There's some kinks that still need to be worked out before we come up with a definitive date.
Would it be possible to have nominations next month?
Once again, there's still some kinks that need to be worked out. We need to work some things out before we could just say we're going to nominate and have an election. We didn't even give a date as a board, as a committee, Meri Makiva, as a committee. This committee has not picked a date for when this will go through. And I'm not sure. I could be wrong. Does it still have to go to the Law Department for approval from the President? I need clarification.
The bylaws, the bylaws changes that were made tonight, can you hear me?
Yes.
Bylaws changes that were made tonight allow for an electronic process. However, these bylaws would have to reflect the date and the period, the month and the period when you want to have the election. Just the way the bylaws, just like the paper ballot called for a May nomination and a June and a June election, if you're going to have an electronic vote, then the bylaws must reflect that accordingly.
And we as committee did not do that section of the We were not told that either. It's in the bylaws.
Well, that should have been brought up. And if you knew that
The bylaw amendments indicate something about the next available meeting. Something there was some in the in the proposed bylaw amendments.
No.
They expanded the dates.
The amendment that's in the pipeline at the end of the report, that, you know, officers' terms will be extended until elections are held. That implies that just have elections.
Says until a hell, but we have not picked a date to hold them or pick the nominations. It has to be clarified. Things have to be clarified to
Julia, I'm a little confused because the whole point of what we did was to not be in this situation right now.
And we are.
I I hear you. But that's we have a committee and and I will say that we
This committee needs to meet again and pick a date and put it in the bylaws.
Why didn't you pick a date and put it in the bylaws? Why are you wasting your money? Why didn't you pick a date? No, no, no. Democracy, democracy, democracy. Pick a date. You did a whole three months to pick a date. This is absurd. We don't get nominated people next month because you have to go to a meeting and have another discussion about whether
Ryan, you should have been there. Thank you for muting her mic. We have not picked a date. Let's make sure we are doing things under the correct laws. Let's do it right. Yes, we had a couple of months. We've had a lot of technical problems. I couldn't even make it to the last meeting because I had a blowout here. I couldn't even get my computer on. As you see, I'm going in and out now and I don't know why. Please, not trying to delay it. And I don't think anybody else is trying to delay it. But if we must as a committee meet to pick a date, that is something we need to do. I don't like going back and forth, back and forth with people. If that's what we need to do, we need to do it.
Just pick a date now.
Hold on a second. I think
It's after nine o'clock. I have a I have a child in the room that I need to get to.
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello. I have a child I need to get to after nine o'clock who has not had his dinner.
Excuse me.
Yes, yeah.
Then we just we upon it today.
Go to your house. Go to your fucking house.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
What happened?
Just pick a date. Julia, Marty.
The bylaw amendment says the next next available date. So it was
Not pick the date. And at this time, I really want to get off this computer. Not trying to block anybody. My September calendar is busy.
You're too busy to vote next month? You can't nominate people? Come on.
You sat in none of our meetings. You don't know what's going on.
Julia, I
Know what's going on. You're trying to not let us nominate people in 30 days because
Thank you. This is what happens at our meetings. Everybody wants to constantly.
My God, this sounds like the President of the United States.
Yes, it does.
Okay, but it's all still about democracy and moving it. So Julia, we have a quorum right here.
Can't we just? Why can't we just?
Why can't the six
The next meeting? Why can't we do it at the next meeting next month? Why can't the names be, you know, the nominations?
Take place next month.
At the next month's meeting. And then the following meeting, we'll do it.
This is the committee meeting. I'd like for my committee to actually be able to sit down and argue it out simply because I know I have agendas. Hold up. I have agendas. I have a lot of meetings in September. I am not only on CB1. Okay. Let me speak.
Our whole group was already agreed.
May I please? What I'm suggesting is that the nominations be brought forth at the next monthly meeting. Are we meeting next month? Are we having another meeting next month? Can we do it next month?
Sure.
And, you know, like
I agree with Maria.
The bylaws would have to reflect
Can I can I say something? This is Bozena Kiminski, and and I'm very concerned about. Today, we had a problem signing in and everybody was was having difficulties. And how can you in a in right mind have the election this way when we all have a problem signing in? Just wait until the next meeting, have everything go smoothly, and then proceed with the election. For God's sake, I mean, I don't I don't think there is a big issue of of people being elected to the position. I mean, we we all know each other. We all know supporting each other, for God's sake.
Heard that. I'd like to read section C, elections in the bylaws, item 10, special election in the event of an interim vacancy, a special election would be called the nominations and then a special election to be held at the next available meeting of the full board following nominations. I feel like we the bylaws allow for us to hold special nominations and special elections.
So what are you proposing?
About next month for nominations and the following month, we have the elections.
Which is what's being proposed, right?
I can't hear y'all. I'm going in and out.
So Julia, we can have he saying that we have the nominations at the next meeting. Jerry, when is that? October what?
October 13.
Okay, October 13. And our and right now, it is September 9th or 8th. So our bylaws, maybe, Julia, we could meet in the next two days.
You can meet in the next two days?
Online.
Okay, well, I won't be there.
Where are you sleeping down?
No, there's nothing with that. Like I said, I have a schedule too. I mean, we all on this board have a
As the chair, why
And other
Julia, give us several dates. Give us several dates.
So I would propose, if you don't mind, I would propose having the nominations at the next meeting, which is October 13, and the elections in November.
Right.
Yes.
Because isn't
We have a quorum of our bylaws committee right here, right now, on this phone.
Marty? Wouldn't the bylaws have to reflect that? That was the whole purpose of having the That was the whole purpose of having the bylaws, to extend the term of offices.
It says the next possible date, until the next possible... Until the next possible...
No, but that's not the regular term of offices.
Right, it extends until the officers are... Until the next available date to have the elections.
That's the public offices law, yes.
As I said, just keep it simple. If we can have a committee meeting...
The committee should really reconvene to come up with a date of a vote and the term of offices.
And put it in the bylaws and make it...
Exactly.
Somebody said that at our last meeting. We all sat there for two hours. That's why we're annoyed.
Well, Jan, nobody brought up the fact that we should be putting a date, a specific one in there. It's now being called out. And I think, I don't think I'm saying this, that we need to adjust it and do it correctly.
The Alice got cut off again, so it's back to you to chair the meeting.
It's assumed at that meeting that the election would take place, the nominations would... The bylaws would get voted on at this meeting. The nominations would be the substitute in the vote, which is the October date. Voting would take place in November. I sat in on both bylaws.
That's not what we said. We did not say that it would be held in November. No one put that it's not in our minutes. No one made a statement as that.
That was our intent, that's what we thought.
Can I ask a question?
And it's not in the minute. It might have been the intent, but it's not in the minutes. If we need it to be in the minutes, and we need to have a specification date, then we need to do so. Come on, stop trying to cut corners.
Are we doing this?
Let me ask a question here. I'm chairing now, so I have to ask a question. Are we fighting over essentially one... In other words, I think is Julia saying, let the bylaws committee be, and then...
Real simple.
And then the bylaws committee will present this to the board in October, and then nominations would be in November, and then voting in December versus the nominations one month earlier and the voting one month earlier?
Dell was trying to calm them down now, and saying that...
Real simple.
Probably about one month now. I think we're fighting over...
They want to have elections next month, right away.
It is in the bylaws. You don't want to hear from anyone else stating it was never presented. It was never in the bylaws. You're not doing anything by the book. Just real simple. I don't understand it, why it's got to be now, when you didn't put it in there. Nobody brought it up. I had a lot of... Janet, I'm speaking now. I have a lot of stuff in my head about these rules and this bylaws. And of course, folks met on their own and discussed it, and I wasn't included, but that has nothing to do with it. The fact is, we did not pick a date. We as a group, I'm not doing this right now. I want to get off this meeting. We as a committee needs to get together, decide on a date, and look at your calendars and make sure you're available.
Right now, Julia, if we...
I'm trying to push stuff ahead that shouldn't be pushed ahead.
If that's true, Julia, plus a date we can meet. That's all we need. Because you've been the problem.
Excuse me, do we have a quorum with the board members that we can all decide today and get this out of the way?
Yeah, I would propose that we have the nominations on Tuesday, October 13th, at the next meeting.
We're trying to pick a date to have a nomination committee. Let's make sure it's in the bylaws. Please stop cutting corners, people.
Nominations at the next meeting.
Julia, that you're available.
The next day, I would be to chair the meeting.
Again, I...
Nominations, October 13th.
Would be, no, we're not having nominations October 13th. We just want to make sure this is in the bylaws and that it's in there. And that nobody comes back and says...
No, it says we can...
The current bylaws say June.
Thank you, everybody, man.
The current bylaws say June and July. And what we said is...
And we just modified that.
What we said, no, that was the original bylaws that we are mending now. The most recent amendment says at the next available date. And we didn't put in a month.
I think, um... I think Jerry made that clear, that that was for another section.
No.
I think that's for, I think that's for a special election. I don't think this is a special election, but... I just, is it, it seems to me, there is... It seems to me this argument is basically over one month difference.
One month.
And...
And a date for a meeting.
Look, I personally very much want this to be over with. I want the elections to be had.
But I want it to be correct.
I mean, is it worth for everyone to have such hostility and anger over a one month difference? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Well, it will be one month, or two months, or six months.
Get us a time with Julia.
It shouldn't be six months, but my understanding is the bylaws committee can meet and then can present the date to the, at the next October, at the October meeting. And then, I would hope that means that the nominations are the next meeting, and then the elections are the next meeting.
I think everybody agrees with your thing. If you give us a date, Julia will give us a date that she can do, because we have been trying to get these dates of meetings, and this is getting boring.
Okay, so, Jan, are you saying you need a date for the next...
Right now, that we can...
I have my calendar in front of me. I was not available in the next two days. That's why you said you want to have the two days.
I just want a date, any date, right now, I'll take.
I have, I don't know if anybody else's calendar is good. I have a little over 22nd.
Of September?
Yes.
Is that a holiday, Marty?
Uh, I don't think so. Let me check. But I have CB1 meeting.
I have the calendar. I don't see it. St. Martin's is the 21st, that Monday.
Let me check.
Where's my phone?
22nd, sounds good.
September 22nd is not a holiday, it's not a Jewish holiday.
Okay, September 22nd.
Okay. And I know I'll be in New York. We could even meet in the office.
Yeah, SLA can meet that day also.
We have SLA that night, so we have WebEx. You can't have it.
Yeah, we can meet in the office.
How about the 24th? Anybody?
Marie's got the calendar with all the meetings on it.
Why don't we just do it? What time is your meeting over? What time is SLA over?
There's 125 licenses that will probably go on the entire...
It's going to go on fast.
That's not a good idea.
That's a long meeting.
How about the 24th? Marie, are we good for that?
I have conflicts myself.
Why don't you put, why don't you get some dates, and then we'll have to check with the committee members to see if they're available.
Is the 24th available? Is the 24th available? Yes, yes.
I'm not available, but I'm not the only one in the world.
Who's not available? And who else?
There's a little story of this board meeting that night.
I'm clear on the 24th.
Can we meet at 5 o'clock on the 22nd?
On the 24th, yeah.
I'm good on the 24th.
What time is your meeting?
Which meeting?
The chorus meeting.
Which one?
SLA.
SLA? What time is the SLA meeting? 6:30?
It's the same time every month, 6:30.
So we can meet at 5 o'clock.
No, no, it's not good. We can't do it the same day. You can't.
I'm on a date of 24th. I'm good.
What about 5 o'clock on the 24th?
Okay.
Good.
I can do that.
5 o'clock works for me on the 24th.
Yes. Me too.
Okay.
That's going to be a board meeting, or?
No.
No, that's a bylaws committee meeting.
Bylaws committee, okay. 5 o'clock on the 24th.
Wake up, wake up, please.
That's a bylaws committee meeting.
It's almost 10 o'clock, guys.
Yeah, and my kid hasn't eaten dinner.
But Marie, you're almost ready.
It's bad at me. I don't know about your kid.
All right, so it's settled that you're going to have the, the meeting is settled. The bylaws committee meeting will be held, and then can vote on the dates in October.
Bye, Marie.
And make sure that it's in the bylaws, that we don't have anybody saying we're just picking random dates to have elections. It will be concrete in the bylaws.
It's June. It says June or July in the bylaws.
But we went past that. We already, I'm not even going to go back there again. I got a headache.
Julia, see how bad my dog is? I just want you to see.
Don't bite nobody.
She's mad.
Yeah, so is my grandson. He's hungry. Can somebody make a motion? I mean, I'm not the chairperson of this meeting, but I need to go.
I make a motion. Yes, we need a motion.
When's the next board meeting?
October 13th.
October 13th? Yes, okay.
Yes, yes. All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
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 Everybody?
Can you just say who made the motion and who seconded the motion before you wrap it?
Yeah. I have the motion to adjourn.
I wouldn't beg a second motion.
Your name should be down on the help list.
Please don't say we need to do a... A what?
What do you need to do?
Nothing.
There's a motion, there's a motion to adjourn.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I wish, please, don't say we need to do a roll call. Please, 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 please.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.